City of Brainerd City Council, it's Tuesday, January 3rd at 7:30 PM. I call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody who was recently elected, please grab your oath and come stand up by the flag.
I felt slighted.
Which way do I go? I didn't know where to move it. Okay. Sorry, folks, you caught me off guard here.
You're good, Jeff.
Which way? Okay, let me take your elbow.
All right, if you would all please raise your right hand, and when I say "aye" and "blank," you will say your name in that place. I
Aye.
Jeffrey.
Vincent Chesak.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of City Council
The duties of the Office of City Council.
Of the City of Brainerd, Minnesota
City of Brainerd, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome to four more years.
This is mine?
Yeah, it's yours.
Here you go, sir, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, these need to be signed and turned in to Jennifer, and then you'll get them back after she signs up. All right, next up is the election of President and Vice President of the Council for 2023-2024. Are there any nominees?
I have a nominee.
Mr. Stunek?
I would nominate, continue with Kelly Beavins because of his professionalism, and move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other nominees? Are there any other nominees?
Mr. Beavins?
Yes.
In the spirit of competition, I would nominate Mr. Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, we have a nomination for Gabe Johnson. So we have two nominees. Is there any other nominees? Is there any other nominees? I'll ask a third and final time if there's any other nominees. How we're gonna vote is you're gonna raise your hand. That way, everybody knows who you voted for. If you get four or more, you win. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, we don't need these ballots. Okay, so I was nominated first, anybody who wants to vote for Kelly Beavins, raise your hand. Okay, anybody who wishes to vote for Gabe Johnson, raise your hand. I count four to three. Anybody dispute that? Okay, is there a a
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, it's to a motion to accept the
I make a motion to accept the nomination of Kelly Beavins as President.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up, we'll do Vice President, is there any nominees for Vice President?
I have a nomination for Mr. Gabe Johnson as Vice President.
We have a nomination by Chesak for Gabe Johnson for Vice President, is there any other nominations for Vice President? Any other nominations for Vice President? Any other, being that we have one candidate, we'll close nominations and look for a motion for Gabe Johnson for Vice President.
Mr. Chair.
Motion by Chesak, second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have a President and a Vice President. We'll call the roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Erickson. Nope.
Is there any audience?
Am I in his chair?
No, Chesak.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Beavins.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Okay, before we move on to the agenda, I would like to make a suggestion for the standing committees. I would like to suggest and look for a motion to approve person on finance to be Stunek, Terry, and Johnson, with Gabe Johnson as Chair. I'd suggest SPW to be O'Day, Chesak, and Stengline, with O'Day as Chair.
Move to approve, Johnson.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, you don't have to move tonight, okay? Anybody can
Read my mind, Kelly.
Yep, we're all here, we're just fine. Next up is item six, and that's, oh, and by the way, we'll take care of the liaisons at the next council meeting, if that's okay. I'll get a chance to talk to some of the new people as to what they're looking for, and have to see what's open. Next up, we're looking for item six, which is an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the a consent calendar. It's a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the Council, will be enacted by one motion, and there'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the Council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved, Stengline.
Second, Stengline, is there a second?
Second, O'Day.
Second, O'Day. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Beavins.
Yes. We are underway. Next up is, oh, where am I going here? Presentation, item eight. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the honor of presenting a tower award once again tonight. This is an award that is given to individuals in our community or within our organization that have stepped up to the cause and have shown that they are valuable to this community, potentially invaluable to this community. But with this award here, I would like to just say a few words about the individual. Tad Erickson is an individual that stepped up to represent Ward One on City Council. However, he was
He was at large.
At large, I know, let me finish my speech here. However, he was at large, but I'm a big proponent of people representing their communities and their neighborhoods. And so even though he was at large, I should say, he represented Ward One very well and the people that live there. This is an award that we argued about, and I say this every time that I present it, we argued about this for a while. I myself argued about whether or not we should reduce the cost of this award, because it is ridiculous. This is like $50, $50. But it means a lot, it means a lot to the city, it means a lot to the people that have received it. And for myself, working alongside you, Tad, it meant a lot to see the way that you were able to not just sit up here and come up with solutions, but get involved in the committees that you were on, to the point where by the end there, I actually enjoyed listening to some of the committees you were on and listening to your voice and hearing the guidance that you had specifically with our planning and zoning. I thought that you did a phenomenal job with that. And so it's sad to see you go, but I know you, and I know that you're gonna continue to be involved with the community, and we're gonna get you to be involved in some of these commissions as well, so I know we're not gonna lose you. But it is my honor and an honor of the entire city to award Tad Erickson with a tower award.
You have two to three minutes to talk.
I'll just say thank you, be really brief, so, Tad Erickson, 1906 Grayden Avenue. Appreciate the comments, very kind of you. It was a joy and a pleasure to serve Brainerd residents, work alongside each and every one of you. I too remember the argument, that was my very first meeting when I was appointed back in 2019, so. Again, thank you very much, and it was a pleasure and an honor, so thanks.
Thank you, Ted.
Thanks, Ted. Item nine is unfinished business. Item nine A is to appoint two members to the Joint Wastewater Management Board. We have a brief description of what this is, does anybody need a refresher as to what this is?
Ask the question, Mr. President.
Absolutely, Mr. Chesak.
Does there any idea where they'll be conducting these meetings when they meet?
None.
Okay.
Not, we don't know when or how often or any of that stuff, we just know that we agreed to it many, many years ago with the City of Baxter and with the half percent sales tax to pay for the wastewater treatment plant. We haven't done it once, so we need to do it. Is that all correct, Jesse, that you know of?
That I am aware of, I know that they have to get some decisions made by that Joint Management Board, and I think this month.
I would expect the first one, Jeff's gonna come up real quick, because we haven't been doing them, so. As far as what happens after that, I don't know. So, does anybody, would anybody, like, volunteer for this? I mean, is anybody interested in this? Jeff? Jeff, you looked like you were raising your hand. Okay, Jeff's in.
If you're gonna make me SPW Chair, I will volunteer my time.
Done, okay. You're accepted. So, Jeff and Mike will be our representatives to the Wastewater Board, and you'll be able to tell us all about it, Jeff, when you come back.
I look forward to it.
I can tell. Next up is item nine B. Final reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 1540. Instituting a three-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking. Mr. Krambeck, anything you'd like to add to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the original six-month moratorium, Ordinance 1534, imposed a six-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking. This six-month moratorium will expire on January 17th. So if approved, this three-month moratorium would go into effect on January 15th, based on publications. This would give the city additional time to review code language and make a final decision, and really make a final decision before the next construction season. So recommended motion would be motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 1540. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Also, holding a public hearing on Proposed Ordinance Number 1540. And motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance Number 1540, an ordinance that imposes a three-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking in the TN1, TN2, CN1, and CN2 zoning districts.
Any questions of staff as to what this ordinance does?
I have a question.
Yep, Mr. Chesak.
When the hospital and the church came forward a few weeks back, is this a direct reflection of changing it to accommodate their needs, this revisiting this? Would that be a fair way to put it, as far as, is that influencing their requests to I guess, like, at the time they wanted the language changed, so now we're moving forward to change the language to accommodate them, is that my understanding here? That's for staff, I believe?
Yes, I can answer that. So this one allows for an extension of three months for us to review it. There was concerns at the last meeting for Proposed Ordinance 1539, which would be actually the actual code language that would be put in permanence. So this just grants a three-month moratorium to extend that, to potentially review that language that they had concerns with. And then, so Proposed Ordinance 1541, that's later on the agenda, is the actual code language that they had concerns with.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 1540. A vote to dispense with the actual reading must be unanimous, is there a motion?
Move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we'll hold a public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 1540, and this is just the moratorium, it's not the so it's just the extension or the additional three months moratorium.
Point of order, Mr. President? I don't see that on the agenda here. Public hearing.
It's 9B on page four, Jeff.
Oh, okay, so I got the final reading.
Yep.
Right underneath it.
Right, the next thing.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay, my agenda is a little bit I'm sorry. Yeah, I skipped, okay, no problem.
All right, so it's 7:46, we'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody is here to speak on the moratorium on Proposed Ordinance 1540. Anybody at all? Anybody online, if you're online and you wish to speak, you would star three, and that will show us that you're interested in speaking, and then star six will unmute you. Anybody online or a final call to speak on Proposed Ordinance 1540? All right, hearing none, we'll look for a motion to, we'll close the public hearing at 7:47, and we'll look for a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 1540, an ordinance that opposes a three-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking in the TN1, TN2, CN1, and CN2 zoning districts. Is there a move to adopt that ordinance?
So moved, second.
Motion by
Chesak.
Chesak, is there a second? Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none, Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Beavins.
Yes, that moratorium is adopted. Next up is item nine C, a call for applicants, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Beavins, the following applications are available on our website, ci.braner.mn.us. This is new. This is new, ladies and gentlemen, hold the phone. Stop what you're doing. The website has changed, and it is not easy. Here we go, we've got numbers involved, we've got dots where they shouldn't be, here we go. That's 279, slash boards dash commissions. I hope you got that, if you didn't, rewind that. That is ci.braner.mn.us/279/boards-commissions.
You don't have any numbers.
They're pulling those numbers out of
Yeah, there's no numbers on our agenda.
What is happening? Okay, all right, thank the Lord.
2798.
Thank the Lord. I was gonna say, we will have zero applications coming through, nobody knows what a
I think Ted would take all of them.
I apologize. Everyone else has a different agenda than I have. Their agenda says www.cibraner.mn.us/boards-commissions. I hope you got that, and if you didn't, call City Hall, they'll gladly direct you to where you should be. The following, applications are available for the following committees. We have the Charter Commission, four terms expiring 2026, one term expiring 2025. The Library, one term expiring 2023. Rental License Board of Appeals, five terms expiring 2025. We also have two terms on the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2028, and one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as Council President, I have two open positions, one on the Airport Commission, to expire in 2025, and two on the Planning and Zoning, to expire in 2025. Item 10 is new business, item 10A is a request for authorization for the Fire Department to apply for a public safety grant. Chief Holmes, anything you want to add to what's in the packet?
Nothing to add unless you have questions.
All right, so the request is to authorize the Fire Department to apply for a grant through the Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation. The total application request will be approximately $18,000, and there's no match required. Any questions of staff?
I shall move to apply
Motion by Stunek, is there a second? Second by Johnson, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. That's for hot sauce? No. All right, next up is item 10B. Look for authorization for submission of Small Cities Development Program Preliminary Proposal to Department of Employment and Economic Development, otherwise known as DED. This is submitted by Connie Hillman, yes? Anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
The HRA is working on a small city, single-family rehab in the southeast section of Brainerd. The grant application was a very short period. The HRA did send out brochures and surveys the end of December to gauge interest. The surveys are due back January 10th, so only a draft of the preliminary proposal was attached. And since the deadline is the date of the next council meeting, this is on the January 3rd meeting tonight. This is a preliminary application, if application is selected, DED will invite the city to submit a full application at a later date. So recommended motion is to authorize the Brainerd HRA to submit a Small Cities Development Program, 2023 Preliminary Proposal to DED for the Southwest Brainerd Grant Program. We do have representatives from the HRA here, if you would like them to, anything to add.
Any questions of staff? We've got lots of them on this one. Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to authorize the Small Cities grant?
So moved.
Motion over here by Terry and O'Day, I think, wasn't it?
Chesak.
Chesak.
Chesak, okay, thank you.
Doubled up on it.
All right. Any comments or questions on the grant application? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is item number C, back to planning and zoning, and this is, I believe, a corrected, or not corrected, because it wasn't wrong, an amended version of what we had in front of us last time, which may contradict our moratorium that we just approved, correct?
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Krambeck, anything you want to add to what's in this packet on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, so, as explained, second reading of Proposed Ordinance 1539, which is very similar to Proposed Ordinance 1541, was conducted on December 5th at the City Council meeting, in addition, a public hearing was also conducted. The ordinance failed for lack of a second motion, as there was concern surrounding specifically the exemptions in this ordinance. City Council then directed Planning Commission to review the ordinance again. So Planning Commission reviewed the new Proposed Ordinance 1541 at their regularly scheduled meeting on December 21st, and recommended that it be brought back to council with line A3 added after much discussion. So I did want to just go over the main portion of this ordinance, as well as those exemptions. So except as provided in Section A of this chapter, no permit shall be issued to allow the demolition of a dwelling unit in the TN1, TN2, CN1, or CN2 zoning districts unless, essentially, these are primary housing districts. A building permit is also issued at the same time to authorize construction of a replacement dwelling unit. A commercial new construction or remodel permit is also issued at the same time to convert or replace a dwelling unit into a commercial unit in the TN2 district. In line A3, as discussed in Planning Commission, City Council approval has been granted through a conditional use permit or interim use permit for an alternative use of the property. So after much discussion, findings were that essentially neighborhood schools, as well as churches, these institutions, are conditional uses within the four zoning districts of this ordinance. So in order for approval of a conditional use permit, these institutions would need to apply for a conditional use permit, meet all the conditions for that type of use in that specific zoning district, provide plans for future use, and it also must be supported by the comprehensive plan as part of the rules and administrations of conditional use permits. So this matter was brought before the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration and approval. Essentially, it would have to be brought back before Planning Commission and City Council. So line A3 now provides the city an option for the demolition of dwelling units through a zoning process review. Also, a major consideration for this ordinance is that essentially these institutions will no longer be able to buy these dwelling units, demolish them, and then come for a conditional use permit after the fact. So there is a review process to this ordinance. So with that, this is the first reading, recommended motion is to hold the first reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 1541, an ordinance amending Section 515-4, general building design standards, and dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance. And again, a unanimous vote is required to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance. And just another note, there would be a public hearing at the second reading. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Krambeck, any questions of staff on Ordinance 1541? Hearing none, is there a motion to hold that first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1541?
So moved, Stengline.
Motion by Stengline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries, we will move it along in two weeks and have a public hearing on that ordinance. Next up is item D, 10D, considering amendment to interim use permit for additional short-term rental. Again, this is Mr. Krambeck, anything you would like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Rick Bedeau has submitted a request for an interim use permit amendment to operate one additional short-term rental in a four-unit rental building at 1005 South Sixth Street. So there's currently one short-term rental unit as part of a previous approved interim use permit, and there are also three long-term rental units that have all been inspected by the City of Brainerd. Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the interim use permit amendment as presented. The recommended motion within this is to approve the interim use permit amendment for two short-term rental units, conditional on reinspection by the building inspector and fire marshal. Additionally, the applicant be allowed to change which units in the building are used for short-term rentals upon notification of staff and reinspection by the building inspector and fire marshal, and only two units may be advertised as short-term rentals at any given time. I could certainly answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is also online to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff or the applicant? Any questions of staff or the applicant? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this interim use permit amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stengline, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oh, yes.
Is this something that we've done before, or is this the first time we've done a, kind of a rotating short-term rental inside of a five-unit building? Is that what I'm getting? Is this the first time we've done it?
So this is an amendment, it's a fourplex essentially. We are, they are licensed for one short-term rental right now, but that is the first property in a multifamily that was allowed for a short-term rental, there was previously one other that was a single-family home.
Okay, and one more question, how many, do you know about how many short-term rentals we have currently in town?
Currently, this is the only short-term rental, there was another one, but that property was sold as a single-family home to a property owner.
Okay, those are the ones I was aware of, sorry, that's all.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the interim use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. 10E is the consideration of removal of a nuisance abatement assessment for 814 Broad Street, Mr. Krambeck or Connie Hillman, what, either one of you?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll take this one. So property exchange hands at the beginning of April, the previous property owner had outstanding citations for an unlicensed vehicle and snow removal on sidewalks from the previous tenants. The new property owner was unaware of the active citations, as citations Uh, the new property owner was unaware of the active citations as citations stay with the property. Uh, the assessment hearing letter to contest assessments was mailed to the previous owner of the property. Um, however, the previous owner, uh, did not forward the letter to the new owner of the property until recently. Uh, the new owner has had no property maintenance issues since purchasing the property. Um, since these are citations and no work has been performed on the property by the city or contracted forces, staff recommends asking Crow Wing County to remove $662.08 for the nuisances, uh, assessment applied to PID 41241501. And if the county is unable to remove the fee, the city pays, uh, $662.08 to Crow Wing County. Also attempt to collect the assessment amount from the previous owner. Um, the current property owner, Mr. Jaeger, is here. If you, do you have any questions for him? Um, and I don't, do you have anything to add to that, Connie? Okay, that is it.
Any questions of staff or the property owner? Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion, uh, to accept staff's recommendation on this property?
So moved.
Motion by O'Dea, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chesak, any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I support the motion, but I just want to say the City Council may have did a precedent a couple of meetings ago when we, when we did this for a different property for the first time ever. And now, right away, we have a second property coming in and doing this, so we may be seeing this a lot in the future. I support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the recommendation from staff, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. All right, next up is City Engineer, Public Works Director Dean on the, uh, award for the Trunk Highway 210 Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge Feasibility Study. Anything, Jesse, you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Just to clarify, so, uh, we did get six really good proposals. Uh, we had three staff that reviewed those six proposals. Uh, we had several evaluation criteria, understanding, approach, qualifications, and cost. After staff did the review and scoring, we had two firms that scored towards the top. SRF and WSB. Uh, staff then had a discussion regarding the two proposals, uh, to come up with a, a recommendation. While the WSB proposal was actually less cost, we had a couple more items in the SRF proposal that we thought gave us a little bit more service for the cost. Uh, it made them the better choice for the project. However, we feel that both firms would give us an acceptable product. Uh, both firms' cost proposal, uh, fell within the allotted $35,000 from the City Council for ARPA. The dollar amount for the SRF is the 34,584.30, not the 32,204. Uh, that was the WSB bid.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have a question, Mr.
Yep, Mr. Chesak.
Uh, if you could, um, the Kiuna Trail comes in on the, um, north side of 210, and the Paul Bunyan is on the opposite side, correct?
Paul Bunyan, yeah, Paul Bunyan is kind of clear on the other side of the town.
Oh, okay, it's on the other side of town.
But it'll eventually come.
But the, okay, the purpose is to have the bridge cross 210 from the Kiuna side to reach the Paul Bunyan on the opposite side, is that correct?
To eventually connect into the trail on, uh, Trunk Highway 225.
Okay.
And we're still working on other segments, kind of in that NP Center area.
Okay, then what is the actual, uh, distance of the corridor where this bridge could potentially cross to connect the two?
So the bridge itself is probably only going to be, um, 100 feet or so. Uh, but we're going to look at some additional trail segments as part of this, uh, to go in with the 210 project. Uh, potentially a little segment on 10th Avenue as maybe a standalone part. Uh, the big part of this proposal was mostly the bridge, just to get it across 210.
Right, I understand that, but is there an actual corridor from one side where the one trail is to the opposite side, a, a distance where this bridge could potentially be put, even though that's what the study is for? What would the actual distance of that corridor be? That, you know, you got a trail on this side and one on this side you want to cross over. What, what is the distance, linear distance from where they would look at potential crossing?
You're, you're saying if this location specifically did not work? Is that correct?
Well, you have a, isn't this a feasibility study to see exactly where the best place to cross is?
We're identifying the Lum Park, uh, location entrance as kind of the, the most desirable entrance for us, and we want to just evaluate if that'll work. Uh, we do have it in the proposal that if, for some reason, there was a, uh, a reason that we weren't able to feasibly construct a bridge there, uh, that they would come up with some alternative locations for us to be able to look at.
It helps, thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Any further questions on the feasibility study? We're looking for a motion to approve staff's recommendation and accept the feasibility study proposal from SRF.
So moved.
Motion by Stunek is our second. Second by Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up is item, item G, requesting elected officials to participate on the Trunk Highway 210 Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge Project Management Team. Mr. Dean, anything you'd like to add to what's in the packet?
Yes, sir, just to quick clarify, so the, the contract we just awarded, um, includes three PMT meetings, project management team meetings, uh, as part of this study. So generally, a beginning, middle, and end. What we'd like is not only staff participate in that, but also have a one to two elected officials from the council or mayor, uh, as well as a park board member, um, to participate in this to kind of provide some guidance throughout the project, or at least through the study, and just make sure that the vision of the elected officials is included in there, so that we're asking some volunteers for those three meetings.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? How many, Jesse?
One to two.
Okay, any volunteers for the feasibility study?
I'll do it, Kelly.
Mr. Johnson, all in Stingline?
I'm booked on the public utilities one, so I don't have to.
Already took a wastewater.
I could, I can sense the enthusiasm for that. All right, I'll accept, uh, Johnson and Stingline. Thank you both for volunteering. Next up is item H, adopting a resolution approving MnDOT agreement for federal participation in construction. Something tells me this has our city engineer written all over it. Anything you'd like to explain on what this, uh, agenda item is?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, so just a quick summary. So this essentially lets MnDOT, uh, act as our fiscal agent in collecting and administering, uh, federal funds that we receive for projects. A couple of the updates in there are the reason why it's being redone, uh, mostly like electronic signatures and their latest Title VI requirements. Really, this agreement and them acting as our fiscal agent for FHWA funds is a really big benefit for us because, uh, it is a very difficult, uh, path to navigate. They have a whole staff that handles that. MnDOT helps collect and disperse those funds as long as our projects meet the federal requirements.
Any questions of staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak?
Um, it, it, I don't, I know you weren't here, Jesse, but is this a, uh, annual thing we do with these funds?
This, this specifically is not an annual thing. This is, happens every few years that they decide that they have to do some updates. Um, like I mentioned, there was about a half dozen updates on this one. Electronic signatures, uh, Title VI, uh, Buy America. They made some tweaks to Buy America requirements. There was a few other ones I can't remember right off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Uh, this is a resolution, so, yeah, we're looking for approval of the resolution and agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Chesak, a second by, uh, Stingline, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
O'Dea?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is, uh, Resolution Proposal Advancing Municipal State Aid Street Funds. Mr. Dean?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, so currently we have advanced nearly $2 million in future state aid construction dollars. Um, being paid advances on our future allocations is not always guaranteed and is subject to funding availability statewide. Uh, there are several projects that we've previously constructed that we were paid short because we were not authorized to advance funds. The total amount was just over a half a million dollars when we figured it all out. Uh, so right now, we're requesting this resolution that will allow us to request, uh, advancing those funds to make us whole in those projects. Again, there's no guarantee that we will be authorized to advance them, uh, but this gives us an option to at least request them. Um, so staff is putting together a plan, uh, that actually potentially helps us resolve the advancing issue in the next couple of years. Uh, once we're able to, uh, put that plan together, uh, staff's going to bring that to council for their review.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on the state aid funds?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question.
Chesak?
I'm not sure if Jesse can answer, but, uh, how long have we been advancing these funds, as maybe Connie knows?
Years. I can't tell you exactly. I know it's been a few years.
I, if I'm not mistaken, it goes back quite a, quite a long time. Do, does, Connie, do you have any?
I do not know either.
Approximate, or just?
No.
Okay.
I do not know.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Any other questions of staff? Staff is recommending adopting the attached resolution advancing the municipal state aid street funds for the construction projects listed, roughly $525,000. Is there a motion to adopt that?
So moved, Johnson.
So moved, Johnson, second. Stunek, any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Cat is here if we need him.
Johnson?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
O'Dea?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yep.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is item J, which is the Authorization for Additional Funds for the Motor Grader. We've got, uh, Jesse Dean, our safety, uh, our Public Works Director and City Engineer, and Finance Director Hillman. Either of you like to speak on this?
I'll, I'll start, Mr. President. Um, so with the approval of the capital budget, we requested a revised purchase agreement from Ziegler Cat. Um, that price came back over 12% higher than this, uh, as the state bid had been revised since August when we had gotten the previous quote. Uh, due to that increase, we decided to explore a similar John Deere grader. Uh, McCoy provided some source well pricing included that was in the memo. Uh, however, their trade-in value is a little bit less than Ziegler Cat. So factoring in the trade-ins, the purchase price is roughly $5,000 less, uh, for the John Deere. The benefit that we've had with Cat is the local Ziegler shop, uh, that's helped perform repairs quickly and conveniently, uh, should we have issues. Uh, so we're just asking to authorize the purchase of Cat or John Deere. Uh, basically, the, the estimated cost difference is about $5,300, and I'll let Connie go over some of the options.
Some of the options for funding, since it's about a $40,000 or $45,000 difference than what we had in the budget. Um, one option is a purchase to come from the capital fund, to allocate additional ARPA funds to you for the 2023 capital purchase, or to budget the difference in the 2024 capital budget since the purchase final payment will not be made until 2024. So staff's recommendation would be to authorize the purchase, purchase of the motor grader from Cat, even though it's more money based on the local dealership and the service that we've received in the past, and to have, allocate an additional $45,000 of the ARPA funds for 2023 capital. Basically, we'd be amending the ARPA budget.
Any questions of staff on this item? Any questions of staff on this item? So the proposal from staff is to purchase the motor grader from Cat and allocate the additional $45,000 of ARPA funds amending the ARPA budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, second by Chesak?
Yep.
Any questions on the motion? Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up is item K, the 2023 Street Department Union Contract. I believe on the line, Chris Schubert can fill us out on any, fill us, on anything we need to know on this. Chris, are you with us?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, if you can hear me.
We hear you.
Thank you. Uh, the city reached a tentative agreement with our IUOE Local 49 Union representing our street department employees for their 2023 contract. The, uh, included in your packet was a summary that included the items agreed to by both the city and union during negotiations, including a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for 2023. Um, just to remember or remind you, the, um, information that is being presented was presented to the city council on December 19th in a closed union negotiation strategy session, and the council did approve, um, the tentative agreement at that point. The union officials did let us know that the membership has voted on the TA summary as well. Um, they approved that on December 20th. Staff is asking for a motion to approve the attached 2023 tentative agreement summary and contract supporting documents between city and IUOE Local 49 Union representing the street department employees. The second motion would be to adopt the attached resolution setting the IUOE Local 49 Street Department wages for 2023.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of staff on the union contract before us? Any questions of staff? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to approve the attached tentative agreement.
So moved, Terry.
Motion by Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Dea, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up, we're looking to have a motion to adopt the attached resolution setting the street department wages for 2023. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved, Johnson.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Terry? Stingline?
Yes.
O'Dea?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, HR Director Schubert. Next up is item, where are we? Item L, which is the Signature on the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Liability Coverage Waiver Form. Finance Director Hillman, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
So annually, the city needs to decide whether to waive or not waive the statutory tort limits. Um, historically, the city has elected not to waive the statutory tort limits, and this is also the recommendation of our local insurance agents. Um, liability coverage would be more expensive, about 3.5% if the city does waive the, um, requirement. So the recommended motion would be to approve and submit the liability coverage waiver form with does not waive the monetary limits of the municipal tort liability.
Thank you, uh, Finance Director Hillman. Any questions of staff on this agenda item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve and submit the liability coverage waiver form?
Move to approve the liability coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Next up is item N, a grant submittal for No Child Left, Left Inside Grant and designate matching funds. Uh, this is, Connie Hillman, you're up again.
The Park Board authorized staff to apply for the No Child Left Inside Grant. It's a $5,000 grant for skates, sleds, and skating aid equipment. Um, the Park Board authorized a $1,000, or 100% match or additional $5,000 for the grant application to be more competitive. Um, the city's policy is to have grants over $5,000 approved by council, but the, the deadline was December 7th and the Park Board met on December 6th. So staff's recommendation would be to ratify the submittal of the $5,000 grant for No Child Left Inside. Um, and also, then we have to come up with the matching grant, and that could be from ARPA. It could be from the Special Projects Budgeted Line Item, which was $28,000 in 2023. Or the, another option would be to have the grant matching funds come out of the Park Board's operating budget. Staff's recommendation would be to designate $5,000 from the 2023 Special Projects Budget Line Item for the grant matching funds, and to further authorize the $5,000 to be transferred to the park operating budget if the grant is awarded to the city.
Any questions of staff regarding this grant submission? Any questions of staff? Okay, so, we're looking for, it's either one motion with two items or two separate motions. One is the ratifying the submittal of the $5,000 grant, and the other is, if you want to make part of the motion, where you think the $5,000 should come from? The matching part. Any questions? Any questions on that? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to ratify the submittal of the $5,000 grant, No Child Left Inside per city policy, and designate $5,000 from the 2023 Special Projects Budget Line Item for the grant matching funds, and further to authorize the $5,000 to be transferred to the park's operating budget if the grant is awarded to the city, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is item N, which is the proposed resolution designating the property taxes generated by the Mills property annexation area to the park dedication fund. Finance Director Hillman, you're on a roll.
When the lively property was annexed into the city back in 2006, the agreement with the township was that for five years following annexation, the property taxes generated from the property would be dedicated to park development. Two other resolutions were passed extending the arrangement for a total of 15 years. About $75,894 has been transferred from the general fund to the park dedication fund in the last 15 years. The options would be to adopt the attached resolution that was in the packet to extend the property tax for another five years, from 2022 through 2026, and that resolution is attached. The other option would be not to extend the transfer passed 2021. And the reason is typically when city annex land, the city pays a percentage of the township for five years, with the percentage reducing each year. So, this has been going on for 15 years. So, staff's recommendation would be to end the transfer of the property taxes generated on the annexation area, known as the Mills lively property, to the park dedication fund. So, then you would not need to pass a resolution. It's up to the council.
Any questions of staff on the proposal? Mr. O'Day.
I know this land has been up for development. It's been up for resale. And if that were to happen, if there were movement on, if this land sells, if somebody's putting in roads or more roads and more pipes, are we going to have to come back and change this, or is that going to continue to just be paid to the park dedication?
I think that would be up to council. Staff would probably bring it back if it was developed. I think that was one of the questions is, if it's developed, does all of it have to be developed, only part of it being developed? And so, staff was like, we've done it for 15 years. Maybe this is something that we stop at this point without having those questions.
So, the staff recommendation is to end the transfer.
Correct.
And at this point, we don't need to do anything. It ends without us doing anything, correct?
Correct. I think it would just reaffirm that. It would be nice to have a motion to say, yes, we are stopping this resolution.
That's what I needed. Okay. So, you understand that it's ending. Staff is recommending that we affirm the ending of those transfers. Administrator Bergman? No? Okay. Any questions of staff? Any comments? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, walk me through what, what was the thought process of this? Why was it done? What was the goal with the money? We've got $75,000. What was the goal with the money?
To set aside in the park dedication funds, which would be for park improvements, not park repairs and maintenance. And it's something that, when it last ended, you know, it was like, the park board said, yes, we want to continue this, and it was a source of revenue going into them for future park expansions. I, it was before my time of how it was set up this way. I don't know the arrangement with the township or how it was set up like that. But, like I said, it's been extended twice now for 15 years.
Okay, but this money isn't sitting around. This money's been spent.
Some of it has been spent, yes.
Okay.
And, yes, Mr. O'Day.
I believe, I remember reading this agreement. I think it was supposed to be dedicated to the parks within that development, from what I remember. It was supposed to be a mix of larger lots and residential area with lots of park space, especially around the water. But, I could be wrong. If, 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 but if I'm right, then the money should still be sitting there because we haven't done anything as far as turning anything into a park there.
When I read the agreement, it did not specifically say parks in that property. It just said for parks, future parks.
It's like social security. Got it.
Any other questions of staff? Any other questions or comments? So, the recommendation is to end the transfer of property taxes to the park dedication fund, but we can do whatever we want. But, if we are going to agree with staff, staff's recommending a motion saying that, so we can be clear.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak.
I, I was wondering, the dollar amount we're contributing each year to the park's dedication fund, is that a possibility of knowing that?
Over the last 15 years, it's about $5,000. It's been less than the most recent year.
Each year. Each year.
Each year. But, it's about a total of almost $76,000 over the last 15. It's gotten significantly less over the last couple of years.
All right. Anybody want to try a motion? Anybody have any thoughts on this property tax money? Mr. Johnson?
I would support passing the resolution to continue it. So, if you hear that motion, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Johnson to continue this, sending it to the park dedication fee.
I, I, I'll second with a question.
Okay. We did have question and answer. Did you miss that part?
Yeah, but I, second, I can ask a question.
All right. On the motion. All right.
He, okay, so you want to continue. My question is, is it, is this resolution, I can't remember, but is there wording in there that contradicts what we're doing here?
The attached resolution said it would be from 2022 to 2026. We would just make it be consistent, or continuous, I should say, for the next five years.
That, okay. So, that's what I thought I read. So, it was continuing in the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I.
The resolution would continue the transfers from 2022 to 2026.
But, the staff's recommendation was to not continue it, even though the resolution indicated we would continue it.
The resolution was attached in case the council wished to continue the, the.
Thank you.
Transfers.
Any other questions on the motion? Mr. O'Day?
I'm for continuing it if it's going to the park funds in some way or another, but I don't think that we should do it if we're just going to not know where it's going.
Park dedication fund.
Right. But, is that going to be spent on our parks now that we have? Because it seems like we don't know what we spent it on.
It would have to be, the park dedication funds can only be spent for park improvements. It cannot be spent on repairs and maintenance. So, if it has been spent, it's been spent on park expansions or new improvements to parks. But, like, you're saying it is not in the parks in that property. The money is not designated for that.
Yeah, we don't have parks there, so.
Correct.
I just don't want it to be a fund that's sitting there unused. So, that answers my question.
Our, our park liaison believes he can come up with some sort of.
Well, we, we could go back and find out what the park dedication funds have been spent on, but I can assure you that they were not spent in that land.
Right.
Yep.
Nor were they supposed to.
Make him happy and spend some money down there.
Oh, I'm not sure that's a good idea. And I'm glad this resolution doesn't do that. But, Mr. Johnson has made the motion that we adopt this resolution. Mr. Chesak has seconded it. We've had spirited discussion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
No.
O'Day.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. That ends a rather lengthy new business. Oh, no.
We still got letters left.
Wait, there's more.
Another page of this. All right, next up, item 10O. Golly, I wonder if we've ever gotten into like double A.
We had an M in the consent and an O on new business.
No committees.
Authorized signatures on a joint service agreement for prosecution services with Baxter and Nisswa. Administrator Bergman?
I forgot you were here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee of the council. That's all right. At the November 21st council meeting, council did direct staff to renew the joint prosecution services agreement with Baxter and Nisswa for using a three-year average based on the number of hours, and also to implement a 10% administrative fee. Staff did meet with representatives from Baxter and Nisswa. The terms of the agreement were agreed to. However, they requested a 5% administrative fee as opposed to a 10% administrative fee. I did bring up the fact that we are paying Crow Wing County a 10% administrative fee on fuel for our transit program. And their discussion was, since that's really more mechanical and there are a lot more things involved with fuel, such as equipment, that they could understand a 10%, their request was 5% as this is Connie's time, as well as they did recognize the liability as well. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on the joint service agreement for prosecution? Hearing none. Is there a motion to?
Sure, Mr. President.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Chesak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Any discussion? Comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. One, one, one day, and that passes. Next up, item 11, public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Usually, we like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. I see there are possibilities online, so if you're online, please hit star three to raise your hand, and when we call on you, star six will unmute you. So, the public hearing is open at 8:30. If there's something we haven't discussed tonight, and you'd like to bring it before the council, now is your time. I'll ask a second time. If there's something you'd like to bring before the council that we haven't discussed this evening, please either come forward or star three online. And a final call for public forums. Seeing none, hearing none. We will close the public forum at 8:32 and move on to staff reports while we're online. Sean, if you can bring him back up. Let's start with Chris Schubert, our HR Director.
I have nothing to add.
Joe Langle, our city attorney.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief Bastel? IT GIS Director Strong, anything to add?
Nothing, thanks.
All right. Connie Hillman? Nope. Jesse Dean?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I got a little bit for you here. So, staff received a request for an update on snow removal at tonight's meeting. So, last week was a short week. We ended up short-staffed most of the week. We had one staff that was scheduled off, and then one of our motor grader operators was out with COVID. So, we were a bit hamstrung from availability side. However, we were able to get some additional snow removal done. We spent much of the early part of last week continuing to remove snow left over from the last snowfall that we just received. So, Tuesday and Wednesday, we were clearing alleys, cul-de-sacs, dead ends, and hauling from areas where the snow wasn't easily moved off of the street initially. Once we had much of the snow cleared from that previous event, then we moved on to Thursday to start pulling curbs, scraping down nearly to pavement and hauling on Oak, as well as South Fifth in front of the high school. On Friday, we finished Oak Street and started loading trucks for salt and sand in preparation for today, as when last Friday, the forecast had the storm potentially beginning early this morning and has since backed off from that. We had continued to monitor that forecast throughout the holiday weekend, and it seems to have changed pretty much a few times every day. So, as of right now, the forecast is showing anywhere from four to six, and you've probably seen a few already coming into tonight's meeting. So, much of it's expected tonight, overnight into early tomorrow. So, with the snow emergency policy for snowfall amounts of approximately four inches or more, in the most recent forecast amounts, we've decided to issue a snow emergency, if, in effect, starting at 4:00 AM tomorrow and going through Wednesday. So, staff had finished prepping the equipment this morning, and you started seeing a lot of them going out there and sanding and salting the trouble intersections, as well as the other areas like College Drive. We are still planning for a 4:00 AM start tomorrow. We'll get started on main route, so everybody can get to work, school, and wherever else they need to get to. But, after that, they're going to be getting, they'll be getting to all the remaining streets. So, once we get the streets cleared, we'll likely continue back to pulling curbs and scraping ice off the pavements as the weather allows. The benefit of the forecast is that the highs continue to look like mid to upper twenties. And anything over 15 allows the salt to work, be it slowly. So, getting the streets clear and drivable will be the priority, and then removals will continue. We'll continue cleanup after that. And then, the only other update I had was, there was a request to have an update on the streetlight policy and the work that we've been doing since the last council meeting. Unfortunately, with the holiday week, getting responses from suppliers was difficult. However, we did get some updates on pricing on the residential poles and the fixtures. So, the new poles at the council's direction are the same as the existing, only black. Since last year, that price has gone up roughly 25% from just over 2,000 to over 2,500. The new fixtures, the Breckenridge that was decided last spring, are priced at about $895. So, and the old fixtures are 470. So, the proposed pole and fixture adds up to roughly $3,400 compared to the old style last year at approximately 2,500 or $900 increase. The supplier also did confirm that the cost for the 3,000 Kelvin would be the same as the 4,000 Kelvin color temperature, which is a benefit compared to our earlier estimate of a $50 increase going with the 3,000 Kelvin. So, James will mention our work group this afternoon, but it was a nice benefit to have that as not an additional cost for that. Again, these costs right now are just budgetary estimates. They're not quotes, but do give us a good indication of what the approximate price increase we should expect to see as we look into this further this spring. We're still looking on getting updated pricing for the commercial poles and the epic fixtures, as well as the add-on costs for banners and outlets, some visuals. There is some requests for visuals on light throwing and direction. So, once we have the pricing for all these, we'll put together another discussion item for council with the options and costs for replacement on commercial corridors with the next few years of projects.
Thank you. James Krabec, Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, as Jesse had alluded there, this afternoon at 4:00, we held a joint work group. Jesse Dean attended, as well as myself and Trent Hockenson from BPU. We also had members from BPU Commission, Park Board, and Planning Commission to discuss specifically lighting color temperature within the city of Brainerd, attempting to add to the lighting policy that Mr. Dean's been working on. So, I believe that work group certainly had a lot of good points and discussion to help Mr. Dean with the street policy recommendation to eventually Safety and Public Works Committee. And then, beyond the street lighting policy, the park board, as well as the Planning and Planning Commission will be looking at potential ordinance changes within our parks, as well as private property for lighting color temperature standards. So, that will be coming in the future. And that is it.
Thank you. Chief Holmes? Administrator Bergman?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Yeah. Item 13, the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Let's have one item tonight. I've been receiving a lot of phone calls about mail recently. And I just speak and say that the mayor of Brainerd does not control the mail. However, the mayor of Brainerd is willing to reach out to those that do, and hopefully ask for some more information, so that we can at least be better informed as to what the issue is. I can't help you personally, but I can at least reach out and try to figure out what maybe the city can help do to get us into a better situation. But, I just want to say that, because I've received a lot of phone calls, a lot of phone calls. And I just want to make sure that people are aware that the city will do what it can to help when it can, so.
There's a sign right in front of the post office. They're looking for help. Go deliver mail.
You know, I don't think you want me sorting things.
So, when we get calls, we're not supposed to direct them to you?
You can always direct everyone to me, but I can't always say that I have the answers, and in this case, I don't have the answers. However, I am willing to help try and find those answers for everyone involved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, yes?
Can I just add something? So, the county board just talked about this today, and so, maybe we can coordinate efforts between the county board and the city to come up with some sort of solution.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Carol. Council member reports will start down on this end. Mr. Chesak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to note that, one quick second here. It is 8:40. We started at 7:30. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to note that, one quick second here. It is 8:40. We started at 7:30. We had a lot of items on our agenda. No PNF, no Safety and Public Works, but we managed this fine. I, I would like everybody to think about just getting rid of those two committees, having everything done here, and then our council president can be involved in all the, all the discussion and, yeah. And happy new year to everybody.
Thank you. Karen Terry, you're up.
I'm nothing to report, but happy to be here.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day?
Not much to add. I just want to say welcome to our two new members, Mr. Chesak, Ms. Terry. Welcome to the council. Hopefully you guys get a little quicker with your seconds because Tiffany's really quick.
Practice.
Tiffany Stengline?
Nothing for me.
Chief Stunek?
I'll echo what Mike said and say thanks to him.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
I have one item, Mr. President. I received a phone call from a constituent today concerned about our pet ordinance regarding egg-laying hens or chickens. Right now, the ordinance is written that you can have four pets. You can have one chicken, two dogs, and a cat, or four chickens and no other animals. He requested that the city council consider counting four egg-laying hens, just as we do a beehive of hundreds of bees as just one pet, because they're, with the food prices rising and hurting the people in our communities, some people are becoming make-your-own-food aficionados, and they want to build some chicken coops, but they want more than one hen, which is a flock bird, can't survive by itself. So I'm hereby formally requesting that we get it on an agenda for the next meeting to discuss the chicken ordinance or whatever it is formally referred to.
Do we need volunteers for a committee?
No. No committee, no committee. Let's go.
No.
Safety and Public Works.
Who wants to be the rooster?
But before we close, I, I do want to thank you all for the confidence you placed in, in me, as well as accepting graciously your committee appointments and especially our two chairs, Mr. Johnson and Mr. O'Day. Thank you all. Hopefully, I will live up to your expectations. Item 15 is an adjournment to the senior officials' training, January 11th at 322 Laurel Street, which is what? What is 322 Laurel Street?
Land Services Building.
Land Services. Brainerd from 5:00 to 7:30. Motion to adjourn.
Second Terry.
Second Terry. Motion by O'Day. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
It's on your email. You got to leave it.
I gotta sign something, don't I?
Ah, your oath of office? Hello, sir. Okay, cool.
That was a sheet of paper we had?
That was a joke. Yes.
I don't have a ringer on my phone.
Neither do I.
Yellow pen? Is that that side?
We gotta go this way. There we go.
I just proved I'm blind.
Bye, Benny.
I kind of knew that, but you know.
That's fine.
Okay, so there's the pen.
That's fine.
This finger, there's the line. So right above that line, and that's the start of the line as well.
Is it here?
Yes, sir. All right, and then I will give it to administrative.
I'm right behind you.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. I should have given you a heads up that we were going to move you to the back of the building.
Oh, that's okay. This is easier for me to find. I did have a question. I still have to get you a chat. This, thought of that tonight, right?
Okay.
Remember, we talked, that was Chris.
It was Chris.
Okay, sorry. Yep.